All right, everybody. Good evening. It is the first of September 2020. We're here for our first Tuesday of the month. Voting meeting here in City Hall and across Athens. And we'll be holding an executive session following our regularly scheduled voting meeting for real estate and personnel matters. So I'm going to go ahead and begin the evening asking Assistant Clerk of Commission Howard to provide a roll call for us.
Christine on mute.
And I don't see Christine. I'm going to go ahead and go through the roll call if you don't mind. Commissioner Davenport?
Here.
Commissioner Parker?
Here.
Commissioner Link?
Here.
Commissioner Wright?
I'm muted.
Yeah, I am. Present.
Commissioner Denson?
Here.
Commissioner Edwards?
Here.
Commissioner Harrod?
Present.
Commissioner Thornton?
Here.
And Commissioner Hamby?
Here.
All right, so we do have a quorum. First order of business is the approval of the minutes from our August meetings. All right, entertain a motion for approval of August minutes.
So moved.
I've got a motion from Commissioner Harrod, and I believe it was second from Commissioner Denson, for approval of our August minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, so minutes are approved. All right. I'm going to ask for a motion to amend the agenda. Commissioner Edwards has brought forward an extension of the Oakland Avenue moratorium that's currently in effect. And so we'd need to amend the agenda to add item number 25, consideration of that matter. Do I hear a motion to amend the agenda to include that item?
So moved.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Wright and a second from Commissioner Edwards to amend the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so we are here with an amended agenda. All right, I have no written communications. I wanted to make a note that, given current COVID restrictions, we are continuing to come remotely, but we have received online comments regarding this agenda. And anything received up until 5 o'clock has been entered into the record. So I appreciate members of the public providing input. We are going to have an opportunity for in-person comment on our two planning and zoning items. We've got requests for withdrawal for both of these that will have to be approved by the commission. And so the first order of business is the request of WNA Engineering for rezoning from EO to RM1 PD for 10.18 acres at 130 Jennings Mill Parkway. And so I'll just ask public information. Do we have any public input on this item?
Yes, good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Scott Haynes. I'm a landscape architect here in town. I work for WNA Engineering. And I'm the agent for Mr. Bobby Cleveland and Dome McCourll LLC, who are the owners of this project. As you stated, we are looking to ask for a withdrawal without prejudice of this item tonight. We hope that if granted, that withdrawal will be able to meet with the neighbors and hopefully with the aid of Mr. Hamby to continue to pursue a solution for this piece of property. As you know, this piece is zoned EO currently. And we believe that that does stand somewhat of a threat to the neighborhood, being such a densely developable piece of property next to an RS-15 piece of neighborhood. So we hope that you allow us to withdraw this item and considering to pursue a solution. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions if you have them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haynes. I appreciate you coming down. All right, as previously noted, we do have a written request for withdrawal of this item. But there has been...
An ordinance real quick?
Yeah, yeah. Go right ahead, Judd.
In ordinance to amend the code of Athens Clark County, Georgia, with respect to rezoning a parcel of land comprising approximately 10.18 acres located at 130 Jennings Mill Parkway from EO Employment Office zoning with conditions to RM1 PD mixed density residential plan development and for other purposes.
Thanks, Judd. I appreciate it. And given that we have a formal request for withdrawal, but this has been publicly advertised, I would need a motion from a member of the commission to accept withdrawal.
Mayor, I'll make that motion to accept the withdrawal for this project.
I'll second.
Thanks, Commissioner Hamby, and thanks, Commissioner Link. So we've got a motion from Commissioner Hamby, a second from Commissioner Link for withdrawal of this item. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor of accepting withdrawal?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, moving on to the second item regarding 28.10 acres at 361 Old Pittard Road. Judd, if you could read this for us, too.
In ordinance to amend the code of Athens Clark County, Georgia, with respect to rezoning a portion of a parcel of land comprising approximately 28.10 acres located at 361 Old Pittard Road from RS-15 Single Family Residential to RS-8 Single Family Residential and for other purposes.
Great. Thank you, Judd. And we also have a formal request for withdrawal of this item, too. And again, just like the last one, this has been publicly advertised. So I would need a motion to accept withdrawal for this.
I make a motion to withdraw this particular project.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Thornton, a second from Commissioner Parker. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor of accepting withdrawal? Please say aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, Planning Director Griffin, I believe your work is done here for the evening. Thank you very much, sir.
Two text amendments still, I believe.
Oh, two text amendments. Oh, well, there we go. I don't want to leave you in the lurch. So moving forward, number three, thank you. I needed to turn the page and then I would have seen them. So we've got a text amendment that's already gone through one of our standing committees regarding home occupation, use of daycare, simply coming into alignment with the state allowance of six children in a daycare environment. I'd certainly be happy to entertain any discussion or hear a motion for approval of this text amendment.
I'll read the ordinance, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Judd.
In ordinance to amend the code of Athens Clark County, Georgia, with respect to home occupations and for other purposes.
Thanks, Judd. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I've got a, I'm going to call that a motion from Commissioner Wright and a second from Commissioner Denson. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, any opposed? All right, everybody loves the kids. Good job. All right, moving on to item number four. This is just a very minor modification in our appeal process. Entertain any discussion or a motion for approval of this text amendment.
I'll read the ordinance real quick.
Thanks.
In ordinance to amend the code of Athens Clark County, Georgia, with respect to appeal procedures and for other purposes.
All right, do I hear a motion for approval?
I'll move. I'll second.
All right, I'm going to call that a motion from Commissioner Denson and a second from Commissioner Link. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, thanks, everyone. Thanks, Brad.
Thank you.
All right, and tonight, on September 1st, we have a consent agenda that's comprised of items five through 13. And I wanted to ask if any commissioner would be interested in removing an item from the consent agenda for individual consideration. All right, I believe we have at least one ordinance. Attorney Drake, could you read that for us?
Yes, sir. It's item number five. In ordinance to amend the FY 2021 annual operating capital budget for Athens Clark County, Georgia, so as to provide funding for expenses related to the acquisition of auditing software for the Office of Operational Analysis and for other purposes.
All right. Thank you, Judd. All right, so do I hear a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
Don't move.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Link and a second from Commissioner Edwards for approval of the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Thanks, everyone. All right, we're going to go ahead and move forward to old business. The first order of business, number 14, is the Athens Downtown Development Authority proposed FY 21 Community Events Program. And I know that there are some recommended modifications from Commissioner Parker and then amendment to that from Commissioner Wright. So Commissioner Parker, if you could first speak to your proposed modification?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So when I was looking over the community events program recommended funding for this year, I noticed that the budgets had been cut from a number of events despite the fact that they hadn't happened this year. For example, Athas was reduced by 15%. Athens Farmer Market had a reduced recommended budget by 67%. The Athens Jewish Film Festivals had their budget recommendation reduced by 300%. And this is pretty common across the board, except for the new programs and with the exception of, I think, the Wild Rumpus Parade that went from $10,000 to $12,000. Most of them were going to enjoy more restricted budgets this time around, which given that a number of sponsors might be slow to come out to sponsor some of these events as they recover from the economic impacts of the pandemic, as well considering that with the social movement taking place across the country right now, events like the MLK Parade are going to be of heightened importance in this coming year. And looking at the ways that many of these events rely on vendor fees to help cover their budgets and the relief that might give to some of these entrepreneurs and artisans if those fees were reduced or waived because these events get bigger funding from the ADDA. I decided to submit a CDO that restores all events to their FY 20 levels of funding. I sent out what those budget allocations are earlier today. The manager helps put together a budget amendment to draw that extra funding from the hotel motel fund balance, which is currently, I believe, at about $287,000 and allocate roughly $17,000 to help fill up some of these budget shortfalls. On that, I wanted to speak a little bit about, I think, Commissioner Wright's amendment that she'd like to make with regards to Athens Pride, recommending that we bump the funding for that event up from $2,500 to $3,500 and ask Commissioner Wright if she would be in support of, instead of taking that money away from Athens Farmers Market, and I think one other event that you mentioned, if instead we could increase the budget amendment to an extra $1,000 to cover that increase in budget for that event.
Thanks, Commissioner Parker. Turn it over to Commissioner Wright.
Yeah, I love spending hotel motel money, and I don't love anything more than giving more diversity to the allocations that we have. So I am thrilled to have another comrade on here watching that budget. And thank you. As soon as you said that the balance of that was substantial, I agree that allocating more to Athens Pride Festival and whatever version they might have of that in October. So I would like to second the motion that you have coming forward. I think that Blaine sent out a thing that said it should have been $17,699. So if we amended it to be $18,000,
leaving the numbers how you have them listed, but yet adding $1,000 to Athens Pride,
I will second that motion if that's what you're going to make.
All right, yeah. So I guess I formalize my motion and I accept Commissioner Wright's amendment and second. Appreciate her support.
Thank you. Look forward to finding ways for the rest of that money.
Thanks, Commissioner Parker. Thanks, Commissioner Wright. Attorney Drake, as a budget amendment, does this require an ordinance reading?
Yes, sir. I have it here. In ordinance to amend fiscal year 2021 annual operating capital budget for Athens Clark County, Georgia, so as to provide additional funding for the community events program in partnership with the Athens Downtown Development Authority and for other purposes. I guess I want to clarify, are we making, this is for $17,699? Yeah, $17,699. Are we changing that amount?
Just by $1,000, so $18,699. And so we'll be withdrawing down that hotel motel fund balance by an additional $1,000. All right, so...
Do we make a motion to amend all of that amendment formally, Mr. Mayor?
All right. I think that was the motion that's on the floor from Commissioner Parker, with second from Commissioner Wright. So any further input into this item? All right, I've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, any opposed? All right, thanks, everyone. All right, we're going to move on to item 15, awarding of the contract to provide onboard transit advertising management services for the Transit Department. And Tim, you'd offered an amendment to this notion, so I'm going to ask you to begin conversation.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yes, so my question to find option. Has this contract, go ahead and move forward with the timeline that's in place, proposing that we go ahead and approve it for two years with the three optional renewing periods. But then we amend the advertising policy right now so that full and half wraps on our buses are allowed on 50% of the fleet at this time and also must incorporate the Athens Transit logo. And then also, already talking to the mayor, having the mayor sign us reviewing this policy in the Government Operations Committee over the next 12 months, and then having a recommendation for amending the policy, if we deem necessary, passed and ready before that first renewing period happens on the third year. So I'll go ahead and make a motion that we pass this with those amendments.
Got a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Denson regarding the transit advertising program and a second from Commissioner Link. Other input? All right, and I'm going to formally assign this to the Government Operations Committee for review. It's been quite a few years, so time is right. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, we're moving on to item number 16. This is our Sploes 2011, project number six, bicycle transportation improvements as part of project number five for Rock Springs Street, South Hall Street, and South Lumpkin Street. All right, any input or a motion on this item?
I'll move that we approve. I just want to say thank you to staff for moving this forward. I think it'll be a huge improvement to the neighborhood. It'll definitely assist in traffic calming and it will provide some refuge for cyclists. That road is a direct contact to Clark Central, direct link between a couple of different neighborhoods, connecting West Broad and Baxter Street. So I think this will be a big boon to the community. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Any other input on this? All right, so got a motion from Commissioner Link. Did I hear a second?
I'll second.
I've got a motion from Commissioner Link, second from Commissioner Wright. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, we're moving on to another T-Sploes project. And this is pedestrian safety and safe routes to schools, project from T-Sploes as well conjoined here. And this regards Magnolia Street and Holman Avenue. This is part of our sidewalk gap program. So any input or motion on this item? Commissioner Link? You're muted.
Sorry.
I was trying not to get you into like your third paragraph of commentary, but...
I know, I was just rambling. Yeah, these are both in my district and I'm glad to see these finally moving forward. The concept was approved probably about two years ago. So I know folks are waiting for these sidewalks and it will definitely enhance pedestrian safety in these neighborhoods. So I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All right, any further input? All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Link and a second from Commissioner Parker. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. I'm looking forward to walking down those sidewalks. All right, moving on to another pedestrian improvement concept, which is on Cherokee Road. And I don't know if Commissioner Davenport or Commissioner Harrod, either of you want to begin the conversation on this? This is sort of at the intersection of your districts and Commissioner Parker's as well.
So Commissioner Harrod and I would like to do another CDO for, to do, to make a recommend, to take the recommendation of AIM and add sidewalk to on the Satterfield Park side and to actually incorporate multi-use paths along Cherokee Road. And everyone should have received our CDO. And we talked to Parker and she understands and agrees. And we hope that our colleagues do the same.
Thanks, Patrick. And you placing that in the form of a motion?
Yeah, a motion that we approve our CDO. Sorry, my cat just scratched me and, but, but, yeah.
And on a multi-use path, you'd have more room to get away, so...
Yeah.
I'll second that and I'll, Kelly, if that's okay?
Please, yeah.
And I'll just add, so, yeah, based upon the conversation at the agenda setting meeting where myself and Commissioners Davenport and Parker had talked about implementing or putting in rather the multi-use path. As we talked about at the agenda setting meeting, this is the central node. The Cherokee Lexington-Gaines intersection is the central node for that corridor. We've got a lot of big plans for that corridor. I think it might be this correctly right now. And I will also add, this relates to the shape of the tad that Patrick and I and Mariah had talked about with regards to Lexington that comes later on in our agenda this evening. So if you'll notice, this part of Cherokee, we have included in the proposed tad for the Lexington Road corridor because that will help with moving all of this down the line in terms of funding and that kind of stuff. So anyway, I hope that everybody will see that this is the best thing to do and will be supportive.
Thanks, Andy. Other input on this project? Allison?
Yes, I'm really excited that you guys have spent time to bring this forward in such detail. To be clear, when we talked about this at the work session, I had wanted us to do both because it's clear that the alternate multi-use path is really what needs to happen there. But I'm glad that you guys didn't hesitate to know that we should be investing in this area now versus wondering if we could do another version later. And also, I think that the original part for the multi-use didn't have the sidewalk on the park side. So I think that that was a very important addition and I'm glad that you guys did that, too. And I look forward to supporting this and seeing it moving forward in this area.
Thanks, Allison. Other input on this segment? Tim?
Yeah, I appreciate the work being done on this. And after looking at it and stuff, and I was confused by some of the concept on the AIM concept seven or project four, something like that, that was listed on there. I contacted some of the Athens Emotion members and they stated that they are not recommending this. I just wanted to clarify, they said that they basically, based on the cost and the fact that the extra one and a half million dollars it's going to cost could be used to advance more of the tier one projects if we had that money left over. And the idea that there's still some large connectivity questions out there about if we built this, if it would and where it would connect to in the future. So, I mean, for that, I'm hesitant to spend another one and a half million dollars on what ends up being a half million dollar project compared to what is the, what was recommended, the $1,000,034,000. And mainly just on that grounds that like this would be, end up being by far per square foot of distance we're covering, by far the most expensive item of all of these T-Sploes project subprojects. And then possibly jeopardizing the funding... the funding for us to actually finish these out, and also those tier one projects, of course, too. And so after talking to, you know, the chair and the co-chair of AIM, I mean, they said that they do not recommend, they recommend going with the original recommendation of the sidewalk for the 1 million dollars. So I hear the, I hear the idea of what's coming up here with the TAD discussion, having to put in, having to be there. But my understanding of like the TAD is that TAD will reduce funding in this area, and then the TAD could fund building, then multi-use trail, which is much more expensive at this point. So with that, I want, I mean, I guess, is it possible that we like table this, put this down the line, until we had more of an idea of what the TAD was going to do and what was going to be there? But as of this project stands now, I don't think I can support this CDO.
I don't want to speak for the district representatives, and then Mariah's going to speak in just a second. But my expectation, kind of reading this, conjoined with the prospective passage of the TAD in just a couple of minutes, is that the tier one projects in the TAD zone coming up would be funding with, funded with TAD dollars. And thus, we wouldn't have to expend the T-Splost dollars on those other tier one projects. For example, a parallel multi-use path to, parallel to Highway 78. So, Mariah, go right ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I, you know, was one of the people that spoke out in favor of the multi-use option at the, at the agenda setting meeting, because, you know, we all want what's best for our districts. But we also have to take a countywide approach and a data-driven approach to deciding where we're going to allocate our limited funds. And so I've gone back and forth over the last week or so, from some of Tim's perspective, having talked to folks on AIM. And now with the recent addition of this area within the TAD boundaries, felt a little more comfortable with moving forward with it, since, as the mayor stated, we can fund these projects and make up for some of their increased expense through making use of TADS. I just wanted to ask one question to Commissioners Harrod or Davenport regarding the AIM recommendations. So were they saying that they recommended the sidewalk on Satterfield? Because I actually didn't have any discussion with folks on AIM about that particular addition. It might have come before you all had added this to the CDO. I wanted to see if maybe that's what you meant with regards to their recommendations.
I'm trying to find, oh, sorry, I'm trying to find my notes. So, yeah, there was a recommendation for, if AIM want to text me right now or correct me, there was a recommendation for a sidewalk on the Satterfield Park side. And there was, and that's why we went with option seven, alternative four.
Okay, okay. But they have not spoken in favor of the multi-use path for Cherokee?
That's my understanding.
Okay, yeah.
And again, I mean, I, you know, would just note that that would be in a more fiscally constrained environment in which there wouldn't be the kind of future TAD revenue.
Right, yeah. And so I'm willing to support this if, you know, with the, with the amended TAD boundaries kind of covering some of that budget gap. But just wanted to clarify some of where they stood with regards to these two projects before, you know, for everyone else's consideration as well.
Melissa?
Yeah, I feel more comfortable supporting this, knowing that those expanded TAD boundaries can make up that difference. I was definitely concerned about the overall project menu for AIM, and the idea of, you know, making the perfect enemy of the good and sacrificing some other projects in order to, in order to have the absolute highest, best level on one particular project. But knowing that there's TAD money out there, well, there will be TAD money out there to cover that gap, and it won't, it won't be a detriment to any of the other projects on the list, I feel more comfortable now.
Thanks, Melissa. And obviously, I think it's evident to everybody that, you know, when we begin to drill down to specific TAD expenditures, that we're going to have to prioritize this. I mean, obviously, we, you know, we wish we could, we could live here in the month of September 2020, and then the month of March of 2021 at the same time. But, you know, these are going to have to be sequential discussions. I mean, I think that's clear to everybody, but I just will plant that personal bug in my own mind as we move forward to the future conversation. Tim?
Yeah, just to follow up for clarification on that. So when we're saying that the TAD funding can be used to pay for that gap, are we saying, you're saying that for like the other tier one projects?
That essentially would be what I understand that we would be talking about is, you know, for a tier one project in the Lexington corridor, rather than spending T-Splost money on that coming project, you know, we would prioritize TAD dollars for that project.
Okay, because I, okay, because I know the other subprojects on Project 12 T-Splost that are listed here, I don't believe any of those other subprojects are in the proposed TAD zones. And I guess I see that if we're just doing it for tier one projects in general, but I guess to staff, we feel confident that we can fund all of the subprojects on Project 12, including, like, if we go ahead and do this with the two and a half million dollar option?
Blaine, can you speak a little bit to how this ties into these future subproject expenditures?
I can't. Let me consult. One of the, if I need to ask staff about that to be absolutely certain, you know, these are in varying degrees of design, and we're not sure, you know, it depends, Commissioner Denson, on the market, you know, and what the bids come back as.
Okay, yeah, because I just have concerns that, like, as I'm looking here, none of these other ones, I believe, are in the proposed TAD areas, like I said. So I have concerns there, and I guess concerns for any other tier one projects that also aren't in the proposed TAD districts, which would not be eligible for this TAD funding.
Yeah, I think the only one that is in a TAD zone is a portion of the Barber Street segment between North Chase and Boulevard.
Kelly, I have a comment.
Yeah, Mike?
So I guess I would say this, y'all, you know, certainly I appreciate the work of Athens in Motion, but, y'all, the document that they presented, document of recommendations, it's not the Bible. So we can certainly, we can certainly make changes as we see fit with that. And I think, I think the folks who represent Districts Eight and District One have seen an opportunity where they know and see that adding more of an investment over to the east side is certainly going to help the east side. And I think that's something we need to really pay attention to when representatives from, who are elected from those areas, make those comments and take them seriously, because I support this, I support this motion. And I don't, you know, I don't know how the TADS will take shape, but I don't think they will, are going to free us from any fiscally constrained environment. I think we're still going to have that, but certainly, certainly looking at what's important to the district and to the people in those districts is important. And I think that takes precedence over whatever has been mentioned in an AIM study that, you know, may have received 400 comments from a population of 120,000 people. I'm not trying to take away from the importance of the list. I think it's a good list. But, but I hope we remember that as we move forward with other T-Splost projects, I hope we'll remember when we start talking about a pedestrian loop that really will add a pedestrian infrastructure all the way around the county, that the TAD will take in a lot of, a lot of, a lot of, a lot of the tier one projects, and that the only way some of these other projects can be funded that aren't on whatever AIM list or that aren't in tier one, or that may or may not be part of a TAD, the only way they could be funded is through our T-Splost program or through property taxes. So, so let's just, I don't know, let's just kind of keep things in perspective here, and also what priorities are for the people in our districts and the community. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Any other thoughts?
I'll just add, I mean, we've studied the Lexington corridor for a long time. You know, we had ULI come out, we've had other studies. And one of the major recommendations for that corridor, to make it a little bit more pedestrian friendly, to try and stimulate some higher quality redevelopment, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, is a multi-use path. Now, that's really talking about along the length of Lexington, but that provides an opportunity to connect the proposed multi-use path along Lexington with this one that we're talking about right now, which, which, you know, is right next to Satterfield Park. So we're talking about people being able to get to the park safely. AIM recommended funding at a certain, a certain level, because they're looking at the county, countywide. That's, that's fine. As Commissioner Hamby said, though, it's not, you know, it's not written in stone. It's a, it's a recommendatory, if that's a word, document. But we've also provided a mechanism whereby any, any difference between what would be spent with T-Splost dollars and what would be spent, you know, to make up the difference, we've provided a mechanism to do that, which is to extend the TAD out into that area. So I'm really not quite sure what the issue is here. But I think it's a good project. I think it's a safer project than simply what was originally recommended. We've provided a mechanism for making up the shortfall in the funding. And, you know, let's see if we vote it up or vote it down.
All right, any other comments before, before the? All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right, any opposed?
No.
All right, please, Clerk of Commission Howard, please note, no from Commissioner Denson. All right, thanks, everyone. All right, we're going to move on to item number 19. 19 is our livestream pipe replacement priorities, project concept.
I'd like to comment on this one, Kelly.
Yeah, go right ahead, Mike.
Sure. And I'm going to comment on it from, from the stormwater perspective. I mean, I think this deals a lot with stormwater, if not most of it. So, you know, y'all, and y'all may have this situation in your district, but in my district, there's been one and two projects where the homeowners are having to deal with stream erosion. And that stream erosion is coming from our stormwater system. We shove the water from stormwater into these streams that causes these erosions. So I know, I know there's two of them in my district, if not, if not more, but I know there's one over in Woodhaven. And what's happening, y'all, is these streams are eroding, and it's getting so close to the house that I've had three people out over in Anna's Walk looking at it, three of our, three of our department directors looking at it. And every one of them have said it's a safety issue. Our county manager's been out there, our attorney's been out there. And what I'm saying, this has, I mean, this may not have anything to do with this particular agenda item, but it's given me a chance to vent about this and to get on record and in a public meeting, that we need to look at our stormwater drainage improvement agreement, because staff is telling us that unless it's on public property, or unless it's a, but it is a safety issue for these homes, then there's nothing we can do with the drainage improvement agreement. So Kelly and Mayor, what I'm asking is that we take a look at this drainage improvement agreement, because what's going to end up happening is this, you know, I already know that one of, one of these homes has engaged an attorney. So what's going to happen is on one of these WebEx meetings, at the end of this meeting, we're going to end up having an executive session, and then we're probably going to end up having to buy a house, not only one area, but several areas that are facing this. So there's something we can do in looking at the drainage improvement agreement, because this particular house has agreed to, to help with the, with the cost. But, but I think it's also a safety issue, because we're shoving our stormwater into these streams that's impacting this home. We permitted this home to be built next to these, next to these streams. So if we're not culpable in some sort of situation in this, then I think we will be having some executive sessions to address this. So I guess, Mayor, what I'm asking is if you, if, and I'm not, you don't have to answer me now, but I think we need to look at these stormwater drainage improvement agreements, so that we can make them more flexible for us to be able to address issues like this. Because I know other counties are doing it, Gwinnett County's doing it, and they're looking at ways to help homeowners from, 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 from basically their, their house falling into the stream, which if you go over to Woodhaven, they're, they're very close to doing that. So, and I don't represent Woodhaven, that's Commissioner Neesmith's old area, but, but that's, that's something that needs to be, that needs to be looked at. So with that said, I'll make a motion to approve item 19, or whatever number it is.
Yeah, 19.
Thank you.
Commissioner Link?
Yeah, just piggybacking on what Mike said, you know, we may also want to take a look at our, our stormwater, our, our stream buffer intrusion allowance. In residential zones, you know, typically we have a 75-foot stream buffer. That's our local buffer. The state maximum is, the state minimum is 25. But our ordinance exempts homes from that 75 feet, and you're allowed to intrude upon that 75-foot buffer, I think up to 2,500 square feet.
That's correct.
So that might be something we look at to prevent this, because, yeah, we're getting more severe precipitation events. We're seeing more development, the more concrete that goes down, the more water gets pushed into the streams. So that, that's another way we could possibly manage some of these. And, you know, I have concerns, I have a stream running behind the homes across from me, and we did have a tree, the bank eroded enough for a tree to come down last year. And, and there's a brand new house that was built there, that's right on that. And, and I do, I do fear that, you know, with that stream taking on more and more water, that bank eroding, lose some homes. So, yeah, that, we'll need to have a deep, deep discussion about this issue. So thanks for bringing that up, Mike.
Yeah, and if anybody's interested, I'll be glad to take you on a tour of Anna's Walk in Kingswood, and maybe, maybe buy you lunch at the same time to take a look at, look at these streams. It's, it's a situation that unfortunately some homeowners are having to face.
Thanks. I know in my time as Commissioner, I helped some homeowners on Barrow Street, right around the corner from my home, kind of on the east side Carrington Plantation area, some homeowners on Danielsville Road as well, kind of all to collaborate with the county to make sure that their homes remain safe from flooding. We get Commissioner Thornton, and then turn it over to Manager Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I'm still in this learning curve, and I did not know about stormwater drainage agreements, and I think the buffers that Commissioner Link had brought up. I hope that the mayor will either put this on a work session or a committee, because every time I speak up or we speak about stormwater, it's always about raising stormwater fees. And nobody is talking about other options or things that we could do to help our constituents. So I hope, Mayor, that we can have a discussion that we will stop trying to penalize our, our constituents when there are other options out there that we can look at. It may not be the answer to everything, but we need to do our best and let the commission, our residents know that it's not, those quarters and dollars add up. So I hope, Mayor, that you would, because this is very interesting to me, and I need to know more, because I'm really concerned about stormwater.
Thanks, Commissioner. Manager Williams?
Yes, I think Commissioner Hamby and Link and Thornton brought up some very important points, and we need to tie those together. And we are looking into issues that Commissioner Hamby brought up. In fact, we were over at Woodhaven yesterday, and we are doing some further research that I want to bring forward. But I do want to tell you that in the near future, I think it's important that we revisit the whole level of service discussion. So those things that you want to take care of, if it is that type of erosion or what have you, because that, you know, the mayor and commission back in '05, I guess, decided a certain level of service, and, and we need to revisit that. We, we did that, I think, just before this commission took, took office, and we really owe it to y'all to come back to that and redo that, so that you understand that. owe it to y'all to come back to that and redo that, so that you understand that and we can talk through that. And, and there are some variants of that that Commissioner Hamby keyed on that we are looking at with the drainage agreements. And certainly, I would love to have that conversation with all of you and answer all your questions and get guidance from you on where to go from there. In the meantime, Commissioner Hamby will continue to, to look at this issue.
All right. I've got a motion from Commissioner Hamby. Who is the second?
I'll, I'll second it, but I also, I hope you'll second it, but I also wanted to say something.
Yeah, go ahead, Andy.
I got my hand up, but you're not looking at it. I just want to say, I completely agree with what Commissioner Hamby said a few moments ago. If you all will remember, we did have a discussion about this about a year or so ago, when we were talking about the appropriate level of service for our stormwater management. And some of us wanted to have a more extensive program than, than others. You know, we've had this sort of notion that, well, any kind of issue that happens on private property, we will just expect the private property owners to, to take care of. And sometimes that happens and sometimes it doesn't. But when it doesn't happen, it affects people downstream to significant, significant degrees. And so I do really think we need to take another look at these stormwater management agreements. And I think it's important that we, we think about, you know, the hydrological cycle as a whole. I mean, we think about water, it gets from high points to low points. Sometimes it goes through public property, sometimes it goes through private property to get from the high point to the low point. But it's all part of the same system, and it eventually flows into, you know, public rivers. And I think we need to take a more holistic look at this. Certainly, it's, it's a more expensive thing to do, but I think we need to think about, you know, water is an important public resource, it's a, it's a public good. And we all benefit from having good, clean drinking water, and I think we need to be less concerned about, is this water flowing across public or private property? And to think more holistically in terms of it being all part of a significant system that we have a duty to manage well. So that's my two cents.
Thanks, Andy. Any other input before we move to a vote? All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Hamby and a second from Commissioner Harrod. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? All right. Thanks for working on that, everyone, and thanks to staff, who I know have given an enormous amount of time to trying to improve the prospects for safe live stream crossings. Item number 20 is the intergovernmental agreement with the Downtown Development Authority for properties at 550 North Jackson Street and 293 Hoyt Street. Want to give a lot of thanks and credit to those Downtown Development Authority members, including Commissioner Hamby, and also to Commissioner Denson, who made some important upgrades to the agreement, highlighting maintaining 25% of the future residential units here in perpetuity as at no more than affordable for those residents earning 80% of the area median income, and also for working in correspondence with the 100% clean and renewable energy resolution. So anybody like to provide some input into this?
I make a motion we approve, Mayor, after we hear from Commissioner Thornton.
I've got Tim and then Avita, go ahead.
I just wanted to make sure, and I think, I'm hoping Tim is going to raise his hand to say what I'm going to say. One thing I want to go on, is you mentioned two things, but also to be working in conjunction with the Kermit Downtown Development Project, which includes Bessel. That was, those, these two projects need to be working together. So I didn't know if that's what you were going to say, Tim, but that was my input, and you added it. Thank you.
I, I think you're right, Commissioner, and I've made sure that everybody who's on that steering group for North Downtown is, is familiar with this, including our outside partners in Columbia and Jonathan Rose Company, and then the Housing Authority also. So go ahead, Tim.
Thank you, Mayor. And, and yeah, I was actually going to make sure to point out the Commissioner Thornton's concern there, which we also added in here. And so very pleased for this to move forward, but I just want to, and I think this whole body wants to ensure that we, we are actually following what we speak about a lot, when we talk about affordable housing, and ensuring that we're actually addressing this affordable housing shortage. And one of the best ways that we can do that is when we're using our own county, public-owned property, that if we're going to let that property be used for residential housing to be created on there, that is our best opportunity right there to make sure that we're requiring and putting in place affordable housing as we create it. I feel like that, that is the first step that we have to ensure that we're doing if we're ever going to actually take care of this affordable housing situation. So yeah, with that, I go ahead and move that we accept the CDL.
I'll second it.
I've got a motion from Commissioner Denson, a second from Commissioner Hamby. Commissioner Link?
Yeah, I feel a lot better about this agreement with this language in it. You know, I did have some pause, you know, considering how much is going on with downtown right now with so many very, very large-scale SLOSS projects. But this does make me feel better, and the idea that this property would also be included in that TAD area, I feel like gives a lot more citizen oversight to it. And the agreement to kind of work hand in glove with the North Downtown project, so I'm, I'm, I've come around to sporting this.
Great. All right. Thanks, Commissioner. Any further input? All right. Yeah, Commissioner Parker.
You're on mute, Mariah. You're still on mute.
Yo, I was doing so good tonight, I took it off mute, and I smoked earlier, you know, absolutely proud. Some things never change. Anyway, I wanted to thank Commissioner Denson for catching this aspect of the IGA and working with me, especially on defining the afford, like what we mean when we say affordable. I think that laying that out and making that very concrete and clear at this point in the process will enable them to be forward-thinking and strategic and figuring out how to finance that housing, to make sure that, that can get, you know, it can get included, and, and, you know, specifically what we're looking for, so that later down the road, we don't end up quavvling over, you know, affordable, you know, who is it affordable for? So I just wanted to, yeah, thank Commissioner Denson again for bringing this forward and express my excitement to get some more affordable housing downtown.
Yes, absolutely. Amen. All right. Any further input? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. All right. Thanks, everyone, for working on this. I really appreciate all the assistance. Item number 21 was the inmate healthcare contract audit report. Madam Auditor, is this still in process and move to next cycle? Apologize, I didn't have a copy of it.
Oops, sorry, I think I needed you and you. There you go. Go ahead. I don't have item number 21 on my agenda. However, the inmate healthcare contract audit report is complete, and the report will be submitted for acceptance on the record for the October voting meeting.
Okay, perfect. All right. Thank you, ma'am, I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
All right. So moving on to item number 22, and talk about great collaborative work. Appreciate everybody who's spent a lot of time and energy working on these redevelopment areas and tax allocation district boundaries. Andy and Patrick and Mariah did a great job, as we began to discuss earlier, creating some parcel additions to the ones covered on Lexington and Gaines School Road, to create some more public infrastructure opportunities, we talked about, some more affordable housing opportunity as well. I worked on the one that includes the parcels that we just spoke about, so that we pick up the Kelly Diversified Building, the Lay Park area and those parking lots, the federal property, and then a swath down to the Charm, that kind of former industrial site. And then, most recently, and I wouldn't expect anybody to have this, because it just popped up in your email box, Tim and Melissa and I worked to add just a few parcels to the Newton Bridge one, and I'll describe briefly, that that's four parcels that are right at the corner of Newton Bridge Road and Vincent Drive clustering around and including the Holland Youth Sports Complex, and then three additional parcels that are right at the corner of Barber Street and Tracy Street, including what served as an informal dump site right there on Tracy Street. So certainly happy to have input from any commissioners, because all of you have worked on this and really been critical in getting this to the finish line.
I, I was, I was kind of hoping there was going to be some more discussion, but, and I did mention it to County Manager Williams today, one of the things I would like on the front end is to include, what do I want to include?
Discussion of East Athens.
Community benefit agreement.
There you go. I think we should, I really think we should have these agreements on the front end and not wait until we're dealing with developers in the future. There is still a lot of concern about TADS being connected to gentification, and people are very leery. I think these community benefit agreements should be woven in, in our agreements for any developer in any community. The benefits not only can talk about what you want built in a particular area, but after I did my research, you could have benefits that include how many people could work and who lives in that district, workforce, workforce development. So I would like to add this to the presentation for tonight, to make sure we have community benefits agreements. And also, I would like for it to lead into community advisory groups. The community needs to feel comfortable, even though we're talking about redevelopment. We like redevelopment, but we don't like the threat that comes with that sometimes. And I said redevelopment, we probably need more redevelopment and not, and a lot less new development. But I would like to include community benefits agreement and community groups, advisory groups to this, to this plan.
Thanks, Commissioner, and I think that's everyone's intent, to have that component of it be baked into our, baked into our activities, so that we're not only visiting with this body about each of the funded projects, but in fact, we're visiting with the community as we do with SLOSS user groups. And Blaine, this would probably be a good time for you to talk a little bit about kind of what the additional work is that would get us from here we are on September 1st to December 31st of this year, in, including the component that Commissioner Thornton mentioned.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, and, and the reason why we need to ask you to go ahead and make decisions on these boundaries is for each of these different redevelopment areas and subsequent TADS if approved, there has to be a redevelopment plan that is created that, that speaks to the goals and the boundaries and, and what you can expect there. And then that would also inform a school impact analysis for each of the areas that the school district is going to contribute their increment, you know, they have to consider the feasibility analysis, the potential impacts from the anticipated growth, and then they would agree to join this body in creating the TADS, and that would shorten the amount of time that the TADS would actually have to be in place to accomplish what you're wanting to accomplish with the expected funds. And so this all sets us up for, I think, a busy October, particularly coming back to you with redevelopment plans and public, you know, public hearing, and then visiting the school district, and then hopefully by the November meeting, we can, you can formally approve the final TADS, and then we have to work a little bit with the state to have them in place before December 31st.
And Blaine, that redevelopment plan would include that public participation process and that community benefit planning as well.
Yes, and thank you for that, Mayor, and I did, Commissioner Thornton and I did speak about that. So just so the viewing audience understands what we mean by community benefit agreement. And so that was a, a concept that was brought up on the Zoom meetings we had with the Northeast Georgia Business Alliance that Commissioner Thornton had to help to put together. And so the thinking there is, that is an agreement that you would enter into with a prospective project. So there's a developer that's coming in, perhaps, and they're asking you for access to some of these funds, whether it's for public infrastructure, whatever, to help their project make it, make it a go. And I think that, at that point, you could use a community benefit agreement to ensure that you could, you know, during that, when you execute the contracts between the two, that you're, you're being very specific about the community benefits that's going to be generated by the development, the project. And, and if they're not, then there's usually some type of clawback there that I think you could have. So I think it's a great concept, and, and I think it should be memorialized here, that that's the intent. I think that another thing in the agenda item it talks about, I know this body had suggested that there be a governance structure where perhaps we had some citizen groups that were supported, that, that helped to advise the mayor and commission on what's going on in the TAD, here's some worthy projects, you know, to bring, bring forth. And certainly, we would want to provide them, you know, some staff to be able to, to help them think through and, and answer any questions or research that they have to do. So I would imagine that those, Mayor, would be created after the TADS had formally come into being after January 1st. And I think that since all of these are area TAD, so they're, at this point, I don't think a project TAD is being proposed, and if you follow me here, then any increase in the value of this property after January 1st would generate excess increment. Okay? So we'll probably go the first year, you know, with the baseline, and then January 1 of the following year, there may be, there will be increases somewhere, and that would generate a certain amount of money. And I think at that point, or just before that, you go ahead and create the committees, get them up to speed, allow them to understand what they're doing, you know, connect with residents, I think that was something that we heard as well. So I think after January 1st, and probably more like mid-next year, you might want to think about going in and setting those groups up so we can orient them, and hopefully some new funds will be generated the following, in January of 2022, and then they could be, they could start bringing recommendations to you.
Right. So a lot of touchpoints coming, and obviously ultimately, in, in any of these projects that are in these boundaries, expending these public funds, you know, they would come before this coming set of citizen bodies, and then ultimately this group. Go ahead, Avita.
And so, Commissioner Williams, are you saying that in this agreement, that we cannot do a sentence, a paragraph, that we will have community benefits agreement? You're saying that we have to just wait, we cannot write it into what we are presenting tonight? Is that what you're saying?
No, ma'am, I, I was agreeing with you. I think you should memorialize that intent. There's nobody entering into an agreement at this point, but that concept, I think, and the citizen groups should help, you know, come up with what might be the focus of those types, of what community benefits are specific to one TAD, and it may be different in another.
And, and I'm agreeing with you, I'm not saying what each, there may be six different things. I'm just saying, we need something in writing saying, now, this is our intent, and one, just one generic sentence. I'm not suggesting the different projects, or who's on these groups, or the trainings. I want to make sure that the folk that are concerned about this have a little bit more security, that this is not going to get lost somewhere down the path. That's all I'm saying.
Yes, ma'am.
Memorialize that in whatever document we have, that's what I'm asking.
And if I might, Mayor, let me answer your question, Commissioner Thornton, by asking Attorney Drake a question. Attorney Drake, we have- Attorney Drake, we have six different redevelopment areas, TADS, and then we have some CDOs. Do you imagine that we would vote on each of the six separately, or would we do them all in one? Sorry to put you on the spot.
Well, ultimately, I know that you will vote on each of the, I believe, each of the TADs separately.
Okay.
They'll stand on their own, their own two feet, you know, their own, yeah, their own two feet, so, uh, as far as tonight's agenda item, no, the purpose is just to set the boundaries, so I'm not sure it really matters.
Okay, well, I think you're right, I think you're right. So Commissioner Thornton, I would say, if we could just, if whoever makes the motion would include that it's the intent with, ultimately with these TADS, that community benefit agreements are used when entering into agreements with, you know, projects. If you agree, that, that should be sufficient.
I make a motion that community benefits agreements are entered into each of the projects.
Could you just extend that, Commissioner, to say, in the amended version of each of these six districts?
In the amended versions of each of these, my dog is, my dog is trying to say it for me. Um, what did you tell me to say?
In, in the amended versions of each of these six districts?
In the amended versions of each of these six districts. Please, somebody just second it. I'll second that.
I'll third if it helps.
Thank you.
Further input from folks? All right, I've got a motion on the floor from Commissioner Thornton, a second from Commissioner Wright, all in favor of including these boundaries with the community benefits language that you just heard.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye. Sorry. No, I, okay, sorry, I messed up, I was muted when we did the ayes, so I don't think you can hear me. I approve.
All right, I'll approve, all right. Once again, any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion carries, we have six redevelopment areas and six tax allocation district boundaries, and a formal intent in each of these, as have been amended by commissioners and myself, to include a community benefit agreement. So thank you all for your, really, I mean, this has been a year and a half in the making, thanks so much for your work, I really appreciate it. We are moving forward, and we do have one additional item that's been brought to us from Commissioner Edwards, and this would be an extension of the demolition moratorium on Oakland Avenue. Commissioner Edwards, I'll go ahead and let you speak to this.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I, uh, I, uh, I'm sorry to bring this forward, this is really an unfortunate episode here where, um, the moratorium expiration date appears to have been wrongly calendared within our planning department, and so thus, none of the steps, or the proper timeline was not followed in this process. So, you know, it was brought to my attention this morning, I hate that this has been, I'm frustrated that this has been foisted upon residents in that area. I fear it may imperil the ultimate designation of this area for, um, an error in calendaring We've had a lot of issues, of course, with the pandemic and COVID and trying to figure out how to host public meetings. The original public meeting on this matter was to occur March 16th. That was delayed, and it appears that this timeline got swept up into the downtown historic district timeline within our offices. And so this, this was a mistake, and, um, we have a revision on the, on the floor here to, um, extend this moratorium just two months. With, I mean, almost all of these steps need to happen in the next two months, and so, September 4th, the postcard invite for the open house will go out for a virtual meeting. It's looking like September 11th, we're going to have an open house event, will be the RSVP will be due for that open house event. September 14th will be the open house event, virtually, 5:30 PM. The 16th of September, we'll have the Historic Preservation Committee meeting. October 2nd, the Georgia Department of Natural Resources Historic Preservation Division 30-day comment period ends. So, you know, the DNR hasn't received our staff report yet. October 2nd, the agenda item report will be posted. October 20th, we'll have it on agenda setting, entitled only, because we'll be waiting on the HPC recommendation, Historic Preservation Commission recommendation on this, along with their own public hearing, the day after, on October 21st. And then we will vote whether or not to designate this district on November 3rd. I've, I've received a flurry of frustrated messages from residents in this area, and I, I share their, I share their frustration, absolutely. We've compressed this timeline to the maximum extent possible, so it'll be two months. So, you know, I, I put this forward and, and hope this never happens again. Thank you, everybody. I move to approve this extension for two months. Thank you.
Second.
Any further input on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Attorney Drake?
I wanted to confirm with Commissioner Edwards, the extension is currently drafted, the resolution to run the moratorium through the first Tuesday of December 2020. Does he mean to make that the first Tuesday of November?
That's right. Yeah, let's, let's cut it down even more, just two months.
Okay.
Thank you, attorney.
Then, uh, I guess we want to make, just get someone to make that amendment, and then we can vote on the item, Mr. Mayor.
All right, motion for that amendment, Commissioner Edwards?
Yeah, I'm so moved.
That, second, Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Tuesday in November. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? All right, um, I, I will, um, go ahead and receive input from commissioners now, we'll go ahead and, we'll go in reverse order, we'll begin with Mike and we'll end with Patrick.
Hey, Mayor.
Oh, yeah, go right ahead, Manager Williams.
I'm sorry to interrupt everyone, um, I, I think there was another item relating to the intergovernmental agreement between...
Oh, thank you, I appreciate it. I apologize, everyone, I missed the second intergovernmental agreement, and this is, this item 23 on your agenda, this is the intergovernmental agreement with the Joint Development Authority that I sit on, and Mayor Farrell from Winterville sits on, and so this formally conveys the $1 million of loan funds that were general fund dollars and the $1.6 million of CARES Act fund dollars, which were the grant dollars, so the Joint Development Authority can initiate that program. So, Mike?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make a motion, Mayor, I think, it's my understanding that the Joint Development Authority has done a lot of groundwork on, on the monies that we allocated for the loan, and, and I think they've done a lot of groundwork on running the $1.6 million that we've allocated for the development, and so now, and I'm expecting, I'm assuming that the management is working with Northeast Georgia Business Alliance to help, help, help figure out how that monies, those monies can be dispersed, those $500,000, so I appreciate the Joint Development Authority of Winterville and the folks associated with that who, who are helping us get this money to the businesses that, that certainly have been impacted by COVID, and a lot of the businesses have, a lot of citizens have, so, 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 so it's certainly appreciated, so I'll make the motion to approve this intergovernmental agreement.
Second.
I've got a motion from Commissioner Hamby, I've got a second from Commissioner Edwards, any further input? Commissioner Link?
Um, yeah, I just, I'm wondering, what's the ETA on when the announcement will be made for folks to apply for these loans and grants?
Um, so I'm, I'm happy to announce that we are all but ready with the last T crossed and I dotted, we have a meeting tomorrow afternoon that I think will kind of put the final touches on this. We do have our financial institution partner who we need simply to do the kind of formal functional things that lending institutions do, so that's in place. So I think in the next seven days, there will be, and ideally even sooner than that, there will be a formal announcement of application for the loan and the grant funds.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. All right, any further questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, before I get to commissioners now, any, any reports from the Office of Operational Analysis?
I don't have anything tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Stephanie. Anything from the attorney's office?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I just want to make the mayor and commissioner aware, excuse me, I just want to make the mayor and commissioner aware that I have named Sherri Hines as the chief, interim chief assistant attorney, and so just want to make everybody aware of that.
Thanks, Judd, great choice. Anything from the manager's office?
I'll just share that I've accepted, I have to notify you, we accept a grant under a certain amount, and we've gotten $3,000 from the Georgia Department of Agriculture Dog and Cat Sterilization Grant, so kudos to Animal Services for pursuing that, and just to let you know that we've accepted that.
Great, thanks, Blaine. All right, and we'll go around the room, I do want to note a couple of things very briefly before I turn it over to Mike, I've got a couple committee assignments tonight. I mentioned earlier, I'm going to assign the transit advertising program to government operations, I'm also going to assign the stormwater management, public-private agreement to government operations, and then I'm going to reassign, for any observations and amendments, the Parklet Program to the ad hoc committee that was put together for that purpose. So go right ahead, Mike.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. I'm kind of wondering, since the mayor, since the manager mentioned the sterilization program, does that apply to Commissioner Herod? We certainly don't need any more little British words around. So thank you for laughing, Commissioner Thornton, but I, I don't really have anything else. I will say that I think the attorney's choice of Attorney Hines as interim is a, is a good choice. I have found Attorney Hines to be very responsive and very helpful in, in the, in the work that we're doing here with the county, so, so anyway, that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Evita?
Um, I just wanted to thank Attorney Judd Drake and Attorney Sherri, Sherri Hines and Commissioner, oh crap, okay, I'll, I'll pass, because somebody's walking by my door.
All right, thanks. Andy? You just muted yourself.
Sorry, I thought, I thought I was okay. I don't really have anything to say, other than I will be inviting Commissioner Hamby to take a very long walk off a very short pier.
Thanks, Russell.
Probably over on Cherokee Road somewhere.
A very short pier, we don't have piers in Georgia, do we? Didn't they call it a dock?
Or a carriage?
Yeah.
I don't know what you've all done to my language.
Check your, check your colloquialisms there, Commissioner Herod. Thanks, everybody, for your support on that moratorium extension. I know that those can be unpleasant, especially when there's a, an extension that comes forward, so I'd like to thank the staff that had sort of led to action to put together that compressed timeline in the attorney's office to put together that resolution, so I'm hoping that we can meet virtually and go through the steps needed to incorporate citizen input, figure out what's going on down there. During all of that discussion, I have received some reports of what sound like possibly public nuisance complaints in that area for some decrepit houses, some fires that have burned in that area, been untended, and also some rodents, so I'll be possibly in touch with code enforcement about those violations. Thanks, everybody, for sticking together and working together. Take care, everybody.
Thanks, Russell. Tim?
Thanks, Mayor. Just a couple of things, one, just wanted to make sure that everybody in the public knows that they can now request an absentee ballot online. State of Georgia has finally, finally launched that web portal. It is mentioned on our website, but it's pretty buried, and if you actually click on the absentee voting link on our website, it's not mentioned anywhere there, so I know it's been pretty recent, but since, you know, we are not going to send, we're only going to send the absentee ballot request forms to the people who haven't requested them, we want to do everything we can to encourage people to request those things on their own, so I hope that we can heighten and really advertise the fact that that portal is out there, so people will use it. And then the, the second thing that I wanted to bring up is, as I think probably most of y'all know, about five weeks ago, the Athens Clark County Police Department released their internal review on the, on the use of force from the May 31st protest that was downtown as part of the Black Lives Matter movement, and I know I've been bringing this up a lot, but it's because I still feel that Athens Clark County has not adequately addressed shortcomings during that situation, and, and I mean, and the internal report, for the most part, absolved ACCPD of doing any wrong and violating any of their policies, but reading that entire 60-page report and then the policies that it referenced, there's a lot of gaps and things left out, the fact that actual tear gas canisters as a chemical agent is not referenced anywhere in our policy at all, it had to be referenced indirectly with hand dispersed chemical agents, things like that. We do not have the policies in place to deal with these situations, it seems like, and that potentially led, is one of the things that led to this, is that, that our police officers have not been given a direction possibly in the policy that the people of Athens Clark County want to see there. And, and again, I, I, I'm calling for us to swiftly address the use of tear gas when you're working with peaceful protesters, and I honestly would like to see us do what other cities that found themselves in a situation over the summer, including Asheville, after tear gas was used on peaceful protesters, they went ahead and ordered an external review that they, that they paid for. So I, I urge us to do either those or both, because I just, again, I believe that peaceful protesters and people, I believe we let Athens down during that time, and I think the report also lets, leaves people of Athens down, and I still feel like we have more to do to address that. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. Allison?
Um, hey, good evening, everybody. Thanks for all the hard work that came into this, it's a good team effort, it feels good. I would like to find some details, so I guess I'm asking the manager and the mayor if you support this, I would like to learn what the pros and cons would be if we could postpone property tax payments. October is coming, October 20 is when they're due, and for property owners who can't pay that at that due date, there are fines involved, and I think that with all the financial struggles that are happening throughout the community, we have done a lot, including for the excise tax, and I think that if we could learn if it's possible for us to extend the deadline, not have any fees, if that's possible, because I wanted to be able to do that in time to vote for us to do that. I think that the landlords that have been lenient with their tenants... that the landlords that have been lenient with their tenants uh might need a little more time to be able to pay their property tax, uh tenants, landlords for their tenants and businesses, maybe the good guys who've been helping them out with that. Uh I think it would be a good gesture for us to uh learn what we could do and 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 if it's feasible for us to give some consideration for property tax due in October.
Thanks, Allison. Melissa?
Yeah, um I just want to remind everyone that we are still in the middle of a raging pandemic and it's gotten many times worse in our direct community. Um you know, now that we've added um thirty thousand or so um young people to our population who are the most highly infected group by far. Um I don't know if anybody took a look at that curve lately, that that local curve, but it is a spike, a direct upward spike. I mean, almost straight up. Um and it's it's pretty frightening. Um so I I would hope that we can come together as a commission and discuss the the data and discuss um, you know, some recommendations from epidemiologists and bring UGA into the discussion. Um I'm not getting any clear information from UGA on what they're doing to um educate students on on outside behavior. I was um happy to see that the Interfaternity Council seems to be cracking down a bit. And I was very happy to see that ACCPD was out all over downtown Saturday night when I took a little cruise through downtown. They were out on busy corners, very politely reminding folks to pull their masks up, handing out masks to people who didn't have them. Um lines outside of bars were socially distanced and uh mask wearing was at a very high percentage. I was actually shocked. Um, you know, and and what I could see inside, you know, the bars that that you could see inside by driving by, they didn't, they weren't nearly as crammed as they have been in the past. There seemed to be groups that were distanced. Um I I don't know what was going on. Of course, nobody in there was masked, but I I I'm and I'm not sure what was going on in other establishments where you can't see inside. Um but it did, you know, it it made me sleep a little better that night. Um so I want to give a shout out for to ACCPD for for, you know, being there. And as far as I know, there weren't any incidents. Um, you know, everything I saw was completely calm and peaceful and polite. And um, you know, I I want to commend those officers for taking on that hard job. Um, you know, and I'm hoping that maybe we won't need to have them out and about so much once people understand that this is part of our culture. Um, you know, and this is just what's expected, um, you know, for the foreseeable future. Um, so I I would ask that we we can have some kind of meeting or subcommittee that can begin to discuss what further measures we can take because um, you know, the governor is touting that numbers are going down statewide. The numbers in Athens are a complete upward spike, and it's it's really terrifying. And I'm particularly terrified for all these young people who will be heading home at Thanksgiving and um, you know, possibly passing these infections on to parents and grandparents who are far less likely to um withstand them. I just fear that there'll be a lot of funerals around Christmas time across Georgia. Thanks.
Thanks, Melissa. Mariah?
Muted. Muted, muted.
I just feel so ashamed. Okay. So, really quick, I just wanted to thank everyone for the support from my CDO earlier, um for equitable funding for our events downtown in the coming year. I think they're really going to appreciate it. It's gonna mean a lot to the artists that take part in these events who have dealt with venue closures and a lot of the artisans who haven't been able to take uh advantage of summer markets and things like that. So thank you very much for that. Um as well, I wanted to give props to Commissioners Herod and Davenport for extending the boundaries of the Lexington Road area. Um TAD, there is a project there that could be a site of some mixed income housing um at twenty-four-hundred, twenty-eight-hundred um shake um Lexington Road. And so I'm happy to see that that was included in this round of TADs. Um and thank you, Commissioner Thornton, for um pushing for community benefits agreements to be included there, because I know that with that particular um site, there is some concern in the neighborhood about how it'll impact property values, that there'll be rental properties as opposed to um uh homeowner occupied properties. So working out with them, those stakeholders, um how to maximize the benefits from a project like that and ensuring at this stage that it's included in the way we're moving forward with uh the form, the, you know, vision we have for these TADs is really great. Um I also wanted to second uh what Commissioner Denson said. I think that people are still uh really uh let down by um our lack of action around not only the protests on May thirty-first, but ensuingly on issues of um of criminal legal reform and uh policing in our communities. Um I think if we can move sooner than later on um some sort of actionable item with with that regard, I think we could avoid situations like we've seen in other cities of things um escalating, uh which I would love to see. Um and so if we can do something like uh go ahead and take decisive action on the use of tear gas in our community, um if we can take decisive action on getting someone to uh independently review the events of May thirty-first and get an outside perspective um that um are those are things that we can do to restore faith in this government that a lot of people are lacking now. So um, yeah, I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Thanks, Mariah. Appreciate it. Patrick?
Yes, I would like to thank my colleagues for um approving new CDOs and um bringing life back to East Athens. We definitely need it. I'd like to echo uh Nipson and Parker. Uh not only just tear gas, rubber bullets, and just any type of military weapon, um any type of use of that um for peaceful protesters needs to be reviewed and prohibited. But also I'd like to echo Tim, uh Commissioner Denson as well. Rates to vote, deadline is October fifth. On the portal, it the portal to get an absentee ballot is online at the Georgia Secretary of State. So please, um if you do so desire, request an absentee ballot, please get that done. And I would like to thank my uh fellow Commissioner uh Thornton for accompanying me yesterday in the hot sun with the bees and the mosquitoes to look at a uh community problem. Um thank you for that. And I also like to um congratulate Attorney Sherri Hines as well as Robert Chesser, the new ACCGOV um project director. Hopefully I got his name, um his title correct, but um that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Patrick.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Andy?
Oh, Andy's muted, but I had something to say too that I forgot.
Uh go go ahead, Russell.
Okay, just real quick, um for Manager Williams, I noticed this story caught my mind. I wanted to bring it to my colleagues' attention. On August twentieth, the Barrow County Sheriff's Office saw that uh a gentleman had a broken taillight. They tried to pull him over and a high-speed chase ensued that then crossed county lines and came into Athens Clark County. And person that they were pursuing, thank you, the person that they were pursuing uh ended up striking an Athens Clark County uh police officer, Sergeant Paul Davidson. And uh first, I'm concerned about Sergeant Davidson. Would like an update on his health. And I also would like an update on our policy regarding when we will allow high-speed chases to come into our county's jurisdiction. And uh if I had to play this one all over again, I would have prohibited uh Barrow County Sheriff's Officers from affecting this pursuit into our county based on a broken taillight. So uh high-speed chases are are very unsafe, and this one caused uh severe harm to one of our staff members. Thank you, Manager.
Thanks, Russell. Andy, circling back?
Thank you, Man- uh Mr. Mayor. Um one thing I think it's really important to mention because I think this is the last time we're gonna have a round robin um before the end of the month, but um people really need to fill out their census forms. Uh we have a low um rate of filling out here in the county. I think we've only got something like fifty-something percent of people who filled out their census form. Uh you can go online and do it. It it took me literally three minutes to do mine. But I think it's really, really important for people to remember that the census affects us in in two very ways. One, it affects the amount of political weight we have both in Atlanta and in Washington, DC, because obviously um for both the Georgia House and Senate districts, those are um reapportioned every so often based upon population. And of course, um in the US Congress, it's the House of Representatives, um the number of representatives is based upon our um population. The other reason it's really important is it affects the amount of federal dollars we get from Washington, DC. We all pay federal taxes. They go to Washington, and it's important that we get our fair share coming back. And for every person who does not fill out the census form, we will lose approximately thirty-two thousand dollars in federal um revenue in various forms uh over the next um ten years. And that's money that goes to everything from fixing roads to our local education system, to healthcare, to all sorts of uh really, really important things, environmental protection. So if you all haven't filled out, uh people that are watching, listening, if you haven't filled out your census form yet, please, please do so. The deadline to do it is the end of this month. The White House moved it up by a month. And so um it was previously the end of October. Now it's the end of this month. So there's a lot of money riding on this. So um if you want to help your community, please fill out your census form.
Thanks, Andy. Uh Manager Williams, anything else?
Uh Commissioner Herod spoke about the census and uh I I appreciate that. Uh I was just gonna point out that the Complete Count Committee will be tabling this Thursday at the Whitehead Road uh Elementary Open House at Georgia Square Mall, helping residents to fill it out. And hopefully we'll have some other um events. We're entering our last month here. But you don't have to wait for an event like Commissioner Herod said. You know, you can go on and a- access your form uh and fill that out. So thank you, Mayor.
Thanks. Twentytwentycensus.gov. And uh I I think uh Andy may have uh beaten my record, but I don't think it took me any more than five minutes. So um do you want to mention as a programming note, a week from tonight, we'll have our monthly work session. And our work sessions now, uh every month are gonna involve uh COVID updates. So next week, we'll talk not only about some of the healthcare metrics, but the prospects for the coming phase two of CARES Act funds. And then on uh September tenth and eleventh, excuse me, we we will have uh our retreat at the Classic Center, uh full day on September tenth, beginning at eight-thirty, half day on September eleventh, beginning at eight-thirty. And um a- at that uh two-day retreat, we'll talk about participatory budgeting. Um we will talk about um where we are going with our justice system and equity work uh and look more broadly at our FY twenty-one budget goals. So um I hope everybody is looking forward to that. Um, all right, um I do need a motion to adjourn upon conclusion of our executive session?
I'm moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and I I do now need a motion to enter into executive session.
So moved.
We'll take a a five-minute break or seven-minute break till seven-fifty.
So moved.
Second.
I've got a motion from Commissioner Edwards, second from Commissioner Denson. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, everybody take seven, and I'll see you back here in just a few.